Our work. Of the Indiana Borough Council work session to order. I don't think we're planning to vote on anything tonight. Nicole, do you know of anything we're supposed to vote on tonight? Then we don't really need to roll call. Anyone else? What do you think? Are there any? Additions to changes? The agenda? Seeing none? Time for public comments?
It was supposed to be here.
Somebody's. I just texted you 20 minutes ago.
Mike, I'm not sure. And that is not Kay Wolfgate. Somebody else said I don't know.
You're a bit of the guest of honor here, actually. Otherwise, it's kind of just us and we're, you know.
We're actually, we're right here. We just made it to, this is what we're going to start discussing. All right. Yeah. Well, first of all, I guess. We've got lots of comments on it.
So I'll line our conversation here for our discussion because I think I asked for this to go in the work session. So I want to be responsible for something. Can we do just that? Talk a little about the thing that happened phase one? And then have a conversation a little bit about maybe terms of process and moving forward or the ARP dollars, which is largely going to be thinking about letting staff sort of lead it. And then for council to be able to give sort of some 50,000 foot level sort of guidance on what phase two or three might or four might be. Does that sound like sense? So the why of this, I want, I just give a little bit of background and then I'm going to hand it over to Kay to talk about the upgrades that are being paid or cycled through. If you haven't seen them, go downtown and take a look. I think it was about a year and a half ago. I think Kay had approached Public Works. Interested in doing some upgrades to IRMC Park. Why? Because Kay, like all of us, thinking Indiana is a fantastic place. She's a business owner right down the town, owns the property right adjacent to it, loves Indiana, has been taking care of it for years and years and years. And had an opportunity to bring some funds in and some partnerships to do it. And and it's great. And you shared this, the vision of making IRMC Park the gem of Indiana. I think we're all, you know, why are we here? It's because we're trying to make Indiana a really nice place within our budget and place people want to be. People want to come, people want to stay, have amenities. So I think that's the big picture of why. And so there's this great project and can you talk a little bit about the results? What were, what sort of the upgrades were and a little bit about that?
Well, I, I think Peter.
Of course, I told Peter, I'm not doing any more planting. I'm not putting any more of my own personality in there. And, and then I couldn't stand it. It was getting really bad. And so then I got the, I talked to Peter again and he said, well, it's IRMC Park. And so they need to come to the plate. So I called them and no, actually I saw Bob Gongawear at a United Way function. And he's like, sure, okay, sure. He was all over it. And then I got a written commitment from him. And every time I see him, he's like, okay, what are you doing? Are you doing it? Blah, blah, blah. And he was really pushing at me and of course we were pushing at each other. And then, of course, she and I got together. So I think it's really important to pull in all the players. So that's what I've been doing and G and I talked about that. IRMC being one of the key players and then Rick Shoemaker that owns Robinson Lidle Shoemaker Funeral Home there. He's very concerned. And
stuff. So it was a so can we just page through and you just talk about what the upgrades were? Kyle, are you over there? Can you click? So right there, if folks can see, take a look, is that a mural? That's a
The skin artworks that's coming in, they put that there.
These are upgrades that are not, you know, I think they look great. I guess there's bulbs under there as well. Is that right? Four ton tons of bulbs that are under there. So what you, what did you see there? In terms of, you know, I think maintenance, our parks folks, Paul was, I think, hand in hand with the project and putting it in. And, you know, the idea is it's something that the borough is committed to maintaining because it is our property. So and like I said, there was other folk, other property owners, adjacent property owners that are there as well. And my understanding is that there's interest to continue this sort of level upgrade there up the street. And so what was that? Was that correct? My understanding is that that's to the end. And from public works perspective, I think from council's perspective, if you walk up IRMC Park and you've got your public works classes on, you'll, you'll see there's cracks and there are, there are just things that there's just basic, you know, structural maintenance that needs to happen and hasn't happened over the last 10 years. And we now have a pretty decent. The other thing I love about this project is it happened and, and that's great. And so I want to encourage that process, which is essentially letting our staff work with community volunteers to kind of guide it. We do have something at the table. We put in our, our labor and this is the phase one here. We have a little more to the table. We have ARP funds that we can put towards that. ARP, not ARP. I dragged it out.
Got shut down late in the day on Monday. They worked all day on Tuesday, so the road did remain closed and it was opened back up on Wednesday. So very short time, nobody called and complained about the road being closed.
And this is, this is what we should as a borough be, be doing. We have not had the capacity to maintain any upgrades. Now we do, we have a parks department and it's, it's working well. So this is again, this is, there is, there was one stipulation that in the terms of feedback from partners was we want to do more, we want to have a, see a plan ahead of time was what our partner from IRMC said in our books that here, this is table said. Let's see a plan before the next phase. And I think that's totally workable. We may, you know, I think they should work. We talked about it, but it probably makes sense to invest in a planner just
She's a good friend of mine and she has agreed to come on with us as, as well. And as you know, as I think most of you know, she is a landscape architect. So she has that capability.
So that's my suggestion on process. We can discuss that process. It's essentially like, let's let, let's let Nicole leave this along with their parks and, and then spend our ARP money on essentially maintaining this, maintaining our, our property that we need to do all the way up through Vinegar Hill. And then we can have a conversation about sort of some guidance in terms of what we'd like to see there. At a sort of 50,000 foot level, it doesn't necessarily micromanage. My big picture here is I'd like to get us out of the micro. I'd like to, you know, get all of us out of the sort of managing this, trusting that we have a team of community stakeholders that has a good sense of design. I'd like to make sure that, you know, as we work on any of our property, we have a sense of sustainability. We've had a commitment, commitment to that. So I think there's, there's options and choices that that can be made in design there. But I probably open it up if people have some thoughts about, oh, the other thought, thought the in terms of IRMC Park, it would be lovely to have something there that really brings people there all the time. Not just for festivals or not just for when we close it, but a feature or something that brings it, brings people there a lot, brings people there on the off season where there's not a you know, what, what exactly that is, I think. We've got to sort of tend the garden first. So I guess if that, if we can scope in discussion like that, question on process and input on what, what, what should be some guidance? And then we can move right along.
There is, can you define sustainability for me?
Tough. Because at least, at least one person on a public works and say it's not very sustainable.
What does that mean? I mean, all dogs will come back here every year. The trees look nice, they're slow growing, right? Mulch isn't sustainable. We got to do a lot of maintenance to, to keep it looking fresh. So what, where's that line?
I think we could probably, we have some guiding documents on set on, on, on paper on, we have this climate change sustainability commitment document that's on. It's there, it's out there. It's probably room for interpretation. I think it's on our website as well. That certainly is room for interpretation. I don't have a good answer. An honest analysis, analysis of this project may not shine very favorably on its sustainability. I think sustainable, I think it's sustainable in that it's maintainable.
I can agree with that.
To get as low maintenance as possible. And that was our aim. Everything we planted, it's very slow growing. And, and Ryan, I've assured Ryan that we'll give him a 101 course on trimming or anything like that that he has to do. We just put a very cheap mulch in right now, since it's just over the winter, knowing we'll have to refresh it next year. So we'll put a much better mulch in next. What kind of mulch? We'll probably use a redwood going forward possibly. I, I don't know. The mulch we used right now, I think is a, it's a black.
Or brown or possibly cherry brown. But it's either dyed brown or a regular brown, non-dyed brown, right?
Cheap mulch that we got from Risingus. Um, I don't think this was dyed. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's kind of. It's, it's tough sometimes. It's a balancing act. Do you, if you get more expensive like redwood, that's probably dyed. I, I don't know. Or is it redwood from redwood trees there? Maybe you could beam me up a little bit there. I don't know.
Or a specific type of mulch?
It lasts much longer. Yeah. And we did have a couple of, yeah.
This thing is no maintenance, right? I mean, even concrete cracks over time. You know, and so the question of low maintenance, well, mulch is not low maintenance, right? Not comparatively speaking.
If you did no mulch, then you would have a big issue. Yeah.
I happen to be a landscaper.
But didn't you say, didn't you say last meeting that the stone would be more maintenance?
No, I said, depends on how you plan on maintaining it. If you're spraying weed. So it all depends on what the, the long term. So anyway, sorry. I don't need to get too sideways on it. It looks very nice.
Like materials and supplies and that, that's for maintenance and supplies of stuff that we would need, like any type of mulch and that, which there's a budget for that stuff every year. So that would be brought up a lot in admin.
I think it looked, you did, they did a great job. So I think it looks very nice.
Myself and Michael CHU, he's the general manager. He lives upstairs of the funeral home. Great guy. So, you know.
Fiscal sponsor is IRMC Park.
Phase two, so council sitting here for as phase two from Nixon to water and up Finnick or Hill would be considered a phase two. And then we'll get into the ARP funding that we do have on here for, that's been budgeted from day one is this 50,000 for IRMC park enhancement. So would council still like to see that funding be put towards that? You know, mixed in with phase two and whatever we decide moving forward, going.
Yeah, that staff can work with community stakeholders and our parks department with that $50,000 for kind of a similar upgrade up all the way up through Vinegar Hill. And if that means, you know, there's extra cash for more mulch, then that's great. But
Just see what the idea would be, certainly. I mean.
You know, so we're designing process.
Well, I, I have since this, this past week, I got kind of the go ahead, kind of, sort of with phase two. So my landscaper and I have already talked about, and he's like, yeah, we can put some uprights in front of the borough building. There's sun there and blah, blah, blah. And of course we'll do rocks and probably our borders, bigger borders yet there because it's a big space. I'm thinking.
Is that, that's
The idea?
Yes, exactly.
Up through IRMC Park.
Yes, yes. Up through to the hill. And, and then I'm already thinking about the hill. I'm already thinking about the hill. It is a bugger, as y'all know, but it's unattractive in its present state. And so I'm talking to some different people. I'm, I'm, I'm very persistent, determined, stubborn. Sometimes people call me person. So I'm like, oh yeah, we can tear it. And he's like, no, we, yeah, me and him. And, and so I, I want to put it past my friend Barb since she is an architect.
I think we could bring.
And our friend, our friend Paul in the parks department. Yeah, that's, so we need to make sure that, that table's large, right?
Start meetings and discuss it and, you know.
Because it's really your, but I saw Bob Gongawear Saturday night. And so what he said to me was, so when are you going to do the next part? So see, right there, I took that from Bob to me. IRMC still has skin in the game and they're willing to put money down for that.
Then there's been not firm commitment, but verbal commitment of a couple of runs that IMC still is interested in helping fund. And we are now, we are now, I think we have maybe more leverage of bringing our own
Well, yeah, I think that's positive towards focusing on maintenance too. Whenever we talk about this, because I think we've run into it multiple times, just with recent projects where we didn't have a realistic view of what it would be to maintain it and what it would cost if things weren't maintained and the remediation that we have to do. So I think we run into that Eighth Street lot and then here too. So I'm glad to hear that, you know, working with our parks, we can get a maintenance plan together.
Thanks, Kay.
You're welcome.
We'll be in touch.
So the phase two is to extend the current landscaping theme, the next block up, so Nixon to water. And that will be done with the combination of ARP money plus whatever we can squeeze out above an IRMC. And then phase three and subsequent will be beginning to think more about like infrastructure within. And that will use whatever remains of the K plus again, whatever IRMC's good for, plus additional fundraising.
Yeah. But I, I
Scope of what we're talking about, Vinegar Hill.
I mean, could we just, yeah, I just want to make sure I'm sort of seeing the long term. But I think that's the long term.
Maintenance issue.
I think it's going to cost a while for a little bit.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to ruin anything out there. That's why I think we need to
Have a plan. This is what we'd like to see and then see if we can get the funding.
Is part of, it's part of the $50,000 also to develop a plan that's costing. We've been spitballing about IRMC Park slash Moore Seventh Street for the duration of my time here. And probably before. And, you know, is part of it to spend some money on a plan to see, you know, what is, what, what is possible, maybe? I don't, I'm just trying to, because I, I agree, it's, it looks lovely. I think that's a great first step, but we, we have a kind of a once generational opportunity in terms of we actually have some money.
I think there's sort of we re-point the steps and just clean that stuff up.
This theme to Water Street, that's going to cover it by a long ways. I mean, we're talking about a couple of stones and a couple of trees, right? So I mean, there's going to be money left over, even, even if it paid for all of it, there would be money left over. Right?
How much IMC wants to pay? That's why they want to see a plan. And then, so I think maybe it would work to even do a little bit of brainstorming as to ideas from all of you. Expect, especially if you're Finnick or Hill type.
I think what, if we would start with a group of us and then come back to public works and report to public works every so often, the like, what we reached. I think that would be a good plan.
I, I think the in terms of the strategy of sort of how to get to that stage three of a larger infrastructure improvement. It seems like we should build on the modest success we've had here. There, we run into a lot of barriers, even when we start talking about those kinds of conversations. And again, this happened. I think phase two can happen as well. And I think it has to because this part, the park's kind of falling apart. So we have to do that. What you're talking about in terms of phase three and larger, like a skating rink would be cool. I'd love a splash pad, these features, we should think about that. But I, it does, it's, it seems like, I guess my recommendation here is to build on what we've got, which is a modest upgrade. To just bring it up to like what it needs to be.
Your work, Kay, and the funding from IRMC and everyone else's stuff. But I agree with Luke that 50K, which is our bottom line, right? And that's, that's, that is, that's, that's money we have in our pocket that is burning a hole in our pocket that we want to spend on IRMC. That more than covers doing this for another block. I, I mean, I'm not a professional, but so we've got, we've already, we can do phase two. And we still can start to work on phase threes. I want to, I would like to start thinking about phase three to do exactly what you're saying, you know, to, to, to carry the momentum forward as opposed to our normal like tripping over ourselves.
I'd like to throw something in there. I do a lot of landscaping designs. I take people's houses and I change them. You don't begin with step one and then hope to get to step three. You start with step five and work your way backwards. If you don't know what you're aiming at, you're going to hit it every time, right? Like, you know, it's a shot in the dark, it's a shot in the dark. And again, I agree, it looks lovely, but if we're talking about 5,000 bucks and put some more mulch in or 10,000 bucks to redo, cool. That's not a big expenditure for an obvious advantage, right? It looks much nicer. But if step three rips it all out, then we just wasted step one and two to not even have a, an image of what three might look like, I think would be a mistake before we spend an appreciable amount of money. Now again, I don't know what this costs.
$338.
Huge investment, right?
Take $5,000 of mulch to do that whole block. It's going to take not even 500. I've done a lot of mulching too.
What we're aiming at even somewhat before working towards it. For example, if we want to do anything to Vinegar Hill, it needs to match what we do down the rest of the road, right? And so if what Vinegar Hill can't have the same theme, then we may be taking a step in the wrong direction because it'll look strange to have a picturesque Vinegar Hill that doesn't match anything else you see. Right? That sort of thing.
That we need feedback on, like, we clearly want to have a design that matches throughout. We don't want to have this waste money. So that's clear, that's clear direction. We want to make, we want to make sure that it's something that, that, that we are responsibly spending the money on. I, you know, like, like I said, I think we should have a feature there or something that brings people downtown all the time. What exactly that is, I'm not sure. I would love to hear from our staff and our folks that are working with key stakeholders, what would actually make sense? What would, what could we could put on the table? And how much will that might cost, right? How much money will we have left?
Necessarily matter, but where does it go? That might be a question that can be answered without having to decide on what it is, right? And then you can landscape and build out and design around a specific central space. For example, right? And then you notice initially, that's all I'm saying. And again, Vinegar, Vinegar Hill can't take mulch, for example. It's fairly steep. Let's just say it can't take mulch. And then you have mulch the whole way down the road. You can do lots of things with Vinegar Hill. But yes, you can do lots of things, whether or not there's a lot of maintenance.
Much more than what's there on Vinegar Hill as it is. So I don't think we should expect much different than the current vegetation, maybe just clearer vegetation. We can't maintain it.
On either side. And I envision maybe Kavolchik's donating two sculptures, two metal sculptures. Now wouldn't that not be cool?
Bottom of the stairs, top of stairs.
So there's a 50,000 foot level. So we have a, we have a, we have an arts focus. We have a lot of murals in town. Town and we have an arts focus. Arts focus, yeah. Why not lean into the arts focus and offer, offer something like that, right? Feature, feature some of that history here.
Paul and I were talking the other day, I think it was you and I. It's very concerned. Parking is an issue in our town. The parking garage is not being utilized. Why don't we make that alleyway? It's now paved. Why don't we make that more attractive? We put some of our 50,000 through there, put some murals up, put some nice lights up. And with Ace Hardware going on the other corner there of that other alley, you're going to have more traffic through there. Okay? And hopefully Ace Hardware will have their own parking, of course. But hopefully we can maybe encourage more people to use the parking garage. It's underutilized big time. So, and, and I think that would, Rick's comment to me was, Rick Shoemaker's comment was, if we shut down IRMC Park, out of town, people don't know where to park. They don't know how to get from out of town to Water Street to park all at that end. Okay? And S and T has been kind enough to allow, they've offered to Rick, to allow them to use that parking right there. And that's another thing that we could dream about is that whole big parking lot there as you and I have all talked about. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of possibilities, there's a lot of probabilities.
We, we tried to get the underside and put the lights going, leaving a parking garage to increase the usage. And so if we are doing this, that seems to make a lot of sense if we love to have office.
Game, the signage is lacking and we've been talking about that for 15 years at least.
With Frank Kinner on Thursday, actually, talking about a big mural with a parking sign and stuff. So.
They're like, welcome to Indiana's and things like that. There isn't very many of those kinds of things, if I recall.
Probably need is more informational signage if we're going to try to help people find their way from out of town to Water Street. That, that in and of itself apparently could make a big difference. I understand that the, the part that IRMC put into this so far is 3,300, you said, 3,500? But during the ongoing discussion in public works, Gerald, I remember you saying at least half a dozen times, this isn't going to cost us a cent. Which it obviously has already because I don't think, I don't think Ryan, I don't think Ryan, or did you reimburse Ryan for the time that he spent? Because he was there for at least half a day.
All right, so I, I just want, why I want to correct the record, reject the minutes. At no point did I say this would ever cost us a cent. At every point I was insisting and saying that we are putting our parks folks on this. And so that's what we're investing in, right? We are helping in that way. So I'm sorry if I didn't make that clear. It
Rest that it wasn't going to cost us money.
And working that day, he, he came about, I think nine o'clock to work until three.
I mean, Ryan, Ryan is a full time, he's a union full time job. He's taking care of things, right? So.
I, I mean, he's, he was going to be paid to work that day.
I, I think he was learning a lot that day too.
Cost us money that we wouldn't have spent otherwise. That's his job.
To take care of parks and plantings and so forth.
Moving forward, doing the second phase, he is aware of like what the vision is and what we'd like to see.
This is a big win, even if it's a modest piece and it's not that much, is because we have sort of the key stakeholders in this community working on this. Including our parks folks, who we've just hired who we really wanted to be involved in this project. It's not moving quite as fast as we might want it to, but it's moving in the speed that I feel like is, is appropriate for the folks that are here. And I'm trying to give us counsel to maybe, maybe let, let here the fifty thousand foot vision, I want a splash park bad. But I don't know how much those cost and we got other stuff to do first, right? Um, and I would love to hear, you know, a thought, a well thought out proposal, what, what could, could be there. But, and I hear you, let's not, it's, it's like quote, right? How do you take the first step and you don't know where you're going? Um, I'm a little bit of that point, but I.
Really moderate, modest in the big scheme of what could be. I understand that. So I don't mean to poo poo on it by any means. I just, when I design someone's landscaping at their house or their hardscape or the water features or any of it, right? My, my job is to get the whole picture and then work backwards to what step one is. Not, this is step one, we'll figure out step two eventually.
And is it, is it a pretty safe bet that whatever we do do for phase three, we're gonna need sidewalks? Along the both sides of what we're doing? So, as spending money on this landscaping isn't.
Yeah.
Sidewalks that are already there. Yeah, so I think it's safe to go to phase two, knowing that we'll probably keep those sidewalks.
Well, yeah, I was actually more concerned with Vinegar Hill when I met, I thought that was phase two.
They're just structural problems.
Right, then.
To safely maintain that, you've gotta, you've gotta tie off and sort of rappel down. And there's just nothing to tie off from a top, except for like a vehicle or something.
Nobody is mentioning the fact that when that project was done on Vinegar Hill, there was in fact a plan.
There's always a plan.
It didn't work out right.
It didn't work, and so we, we have.
There was a plan and it wasn't necessarily, on paper, it looked beautiful.
Okay, you mentioned, you mentioned that, okay, you mentioned that Barb Hague, you take Barb, is Barb doing this pro bono?
She agreed to come onboard our group right now, so I, I haven't approached her with that yet. I know she's extremely busy person. We're dear friends. I, I haven't got that far yet, but that's a good question.
I'm heartened to hear that Barb's involved, because I think we're kinda, I think everyone agrees that it'd be great to do something, do as much as we can. With that space and having, as, as Lucas pointed out, having a professional help us envision what that would look like. Probably with some input from, from council members and from staff in terms of, you know, what is an overall vision and what is reasonable vision to, to maintain. I think it's great, cause it's, I mean, I mean, short of us all just going around like, what would we like to see in the space? Which we could do, that'd be a place to start the visioning aspect of it. It's hard, I mean, I think where we keep, we keep getting bogged down in the details of multicolor and that kind of stuff. And so I think, you know, I think it's great that she's involved and if we could, you know, if we got a pair, then I think that might be a reasonable use of some of our funds, just to kind of.
I, I, I've done the post office for years, okay? And um, I walked from IRMC Park after we were done with that project on Tuesday. And walked down to the post office to do some weeding and trimming and stuff like that. Well, going down the south part of Seventh Street, it looks terrible. It's depressing. There's about four trees missing. And there's one tree there that should be missing and, and, and the other trees look horrible. I mean, it looks horrible. So that's, I'm just putting that out there. I, and I think as a main branch coming into town, it needs to look definitely more attractive. Yeah, it just looks terrible. So. But the landscaper that I have working with me is extremely professional. It's, it's Algracian. I think you probably know him. Yeah. A lot of top properties in there. He really knows what he's doing. So he's, he's, I think he's excellent. Yeah, you're all welcome. Thank you.
You need for an executive session? The administration committee's chair is again out down, taking care of her father. Do we have anything to, we haven't met since the last meeting, so, so we will be dealing with the budget. Other committees are getting their portions ready and then we get to look at it all.
Just a couple of things that are going on downtown. There's gonna be a D I sponsored trick or treating event on October twenty-ninth from ten to noon, kind of in and out of the downtown businesses and social clubs. The Wine and Spirit Walk is on November fourth at five P M. Starting at the Coney, if you want to do that. Showclicks.com and the, the end of clicks is an X, not a C K S. There's gonna be some live music coming to downtown. The, the big six are playing at the Coney on November fifth, again with showclicks.com. And then I think a lot of folks have already seen that the Indiana Theater is gonna be hosting live shows. Starting on the twelfth with Joe Kraszewski, then the House Rockers, as well as Gene the Werewolf. In addition to that, if folks want to help support that, this weekend on the twenty-third, starting at ten A M. They're doing sort of a cleanup and spruce up of the Indiana Theater. And if you want to volunteer from that, shoot me an email and I'll put you in touch with them. And then, of course, Light Up Night is the eighteenth, uh, the Friday, starts at five, the trees at six, the parade's at seven. Um, and then there's gonna be a festival, kind of that whole weekend, the eighteenth to the twentieth, that's gonna be coming throughout downtown. There's gonna be holiday movies at the Jimmy Stewart Museum. Uh, there's antique toy display at the Historical Society ornament making, it's still coal pottery. Um, and breakfast with Santa at Josephine's among other events. So it should be a nice sort of intensive kind of kickoff to the holiday season.
Pressure.
Certainly, there's been an insistence that it is, it is Halloween, always on Halloween, regardless of what day of the week it is. So everybody can plan easily, particularly if other people have already told people. Historically, Halloween, regardless of what night it's, cause then there's never any question.
And announce it to the press, it can get in the paper, because other towns around us have already announced it.
So I think from six to eight on October thirty-first sounds just right.
Alright.
Unlike any other.
And for Halloween. Okay, sorry to interrupt that, but it reminded me that it had to be done.
Good point.
Yes, that's all from you. Okay, public safety.
We had nothing to mention. We meet this Thursday.
Which Thursday is also the last third Thursday.
Should be.
It'll be at the Coney probably. It's already been decided or?
Tomorrow, yeah.
You, you figured out how they're gonna decide.
I have to post it, so it's my job now.
Sunny and forty-eight. Forty-eight is high.
Today.
Downtown movie, is it doing Night of the Living Dead downtown? Somebody's doing that.
I've seen it somewhere, yeah.
Someone's happening downtown, alright, somebody's doing. Uh, we don't have anything to report there. I did see on the Facebook that fallen collection is happening right now, so if you have limbs that have fallen. Um, should put them on the, your front lawn where usually you keep your trash. Um, and usually they follow your, the day after your trash day. If you've missed that or there's a big storm afterwards, our folks are usually pretty good about getting around the burrow and picking up limbs anyway, so do put them there. And if it's still there, a call to the office will probably help out too, but they're, they usually will pick up those big limbs that fall from the storm.
At the moment.
And leaves will probably start next week, next week. Uh, same thing, leaves, put them on the, on the edge.
No, meet next Monday.
Okay.
Coming up, who's next? So my goal is to have all the, all the budget ready for Advent on Tuesday. So come and see the whole budget and then for up, um, November's work session, we'll go over like a, an overview of it. Pass, um, vote to pass to advertise the ordinance. Currently, we can talk about this for all year, you know, I just want to give everybody's heads up that, you know, I am currently working with. The budget with an increase of a point five mil increase in taxes. So I don't want anybody to be surprised, so when you see it. So, but we can discuss it more in detail. Um, so again, it's going well. Big news is the, and this is for some older council members, that's been around a long time. The B and L lawsuit is done. They have pulled out. It is, it's, they closed, somebody bought the property today, actually they closed. And they, um, the lawsuit is withdrawn and over with. You know lawsuit, so.
So can it be explained in thirty seconds or less? That's a no, okay, well, you can tell me some other time.
They're being sued by property owners who wanted to put something that we, that didn't really fit with the zoning in the, in the area. But it was a little ambiguous under what was called a traditional neighborhood overlay. That was a thing we did briefly. Before most of the council was here.
So it's all gone by bye. Perfect.
So it sort of changed our process from having planning commission, having sort of a say, you know, on projects to them not having.
They can recommend, but they can.
Some other good news is. Eight, but November first, we will have free parking in the parking garage from five to seven. So we're gonna start, um, we're still waiting on the company to make sure our, that will work with our gates or programming everything. So, um, we gave them an effective date of November first, so we'll start putting that out there soon as we get confirmation. So five to seven, free parking, and that's Monday through Friday, uh, in the parking garage.
On Saturday.
If your meal before seven.
Saturday is just normal parking garage hours. This is only parking garage, not winters, yeah. The car, yeah, cause we get a lot of college students that come in for the weekend, come in there all weekend. Our people in general.
Thank you. Just wanted to report on coffee with a cough. It was last week, police department, uh, had coffee with many residents and some students on I U P's campus. So, uh, we spent thirty minutes, uh, on I U P's campus and we spent time at Commonplace Coffee House, Artist Hand and Cafe Omadais. And the officers there bought coffee for those who walked in and joined us. So very much appreciated that. My understanding is that the conversation was really good, even if there wasn't intended to be a conversation when someone walked into the coffee shop. So, uh, pleased about that and we will certainly not only carry on that tradition, but make more times during the year where we can engage like that informally. Second, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And there is an event on the courthouse lawn this Friday at eleven thirty A M, sponsored by the Alice Paul House. And I just want to mention that the Alice Paul House has been a terrific partner to all first responders. And so, uh, there will be, uh, I'm sure a sizable presence on the lawn to support the Alice Paul House. That is Friday, this Friday at eleven thirty A M on the courthouse lawn. Civil service, I don't know, uh, we, we've been announcing fairly heavily that we're accepting applications. For an entry level eligibility list for police officer, that, the application's closed tomorrow, October nineteenth. Testing is October twenty-second. I should have more of an understanding of, uh, the applicant pool come public safety meeting in our, this month. But I will not know any results until probably mid-November. Halloween safety, uh, the mayor's announced that Halloween is October thirty-first from six to eight P M in Indiana Borough. And so along with that, I just want to inform council that, uh, three of, uh, your police officers, Sergeant Michael Rayko. Detective Andrew Perry and Officer Casey Neiver, uh, took part in recording some public safety announcements for Halloween, which are gonna play on some radio stations. And so I would just like to reiterate that adults should always accompany their kids, uh, especially young kids while they go out trick or treating. Our children should never go inside a stranger's home even for a minute. I'm encouraging and the police department's encouraging children to walk, not run, stay on the sidewalks, not the street. And, uh, put down all electronic devices as we're navigating from house to house. We're asking our motorists to drive slowly and cautiously and to be extra careful when entering and exiting driveways and alleyway surfaces. And we're asking parents to inspect all candy before it's consumed. And if you're walking at night, at six to eight will be dark, uh, we would like you to carry a flashlight and walk in groups. So, uh, those will be some of the topics of, of the conversations that our officers will be having with the public. And then it's already been hit on, but our next major event in Indiana Borough is its Wonderful Life Parade. And that'll be a full-scale, uh, first responder, public safety. Whole, whole borough effort. And so there will be, it's already been, being planned and there will continue to be planning up until that day. And I have nothing further, thank you.
Have a question. I apologize, not specifically for the chief, but if you know what please by all means, how would one sign up if they wanted to be in the Wonderful Life Parade?
There's a link, D I, right?
There's a form and then you email it to office@downtownindiana.org.
Who knows?
There were three sponsors listed on the special event application and if, if there is a question or anyone would like to know specifically who the sponsors are, I don't have that information at my fingertips, but I could certainly give that information.
Thank you.
I really have nothing tonight. Thank you. Been to a couple of meetings, but they haven't gone anywhere. Ongoing sort of thing. Kyle and I are continuing to meet with Get Solar, which is. Getting solar. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
The big announcement. Nothing so important to say. So otherwise, I'm good. Thank you. Thank you.
Related, but if you have school age kids, kindergarten through eighth grade, they can get into the IUP football game Saturday at no cost. Parents have to pay, but IUP and the school district are teaming up to offer free tickets, kindergarten through eighth grade. After eighth grade, it's a recruiting violation. They're not allowed to give free tickets. But K through eight, go to the game, you might enjoy it. They are undefeated, 13th in the country. I think they have to be. The tickets are through the school district. It's collaboration with the school district. So I can't speak to younger than that, but.
You can't pass for that young anyhow. So the next thing on the agenda is old business, the this American Rescue Plan, and that's included in your packet.
I would like to discuss the email from that I sent out. It was later from Commissioner Mike Keith regarding their ARP funding. So it all falls in line. So back to the history of it. Months ago, you know, the county contacted us saying, hey, we have ARP money too. We're willing, you know, give us a project. Stormwater broadband related, that they scoped theirs down to that. So we had the the Stormwater project on the Nixon Avenue project already in the works. So we presented that. At that time, we had no idea how much we were gonna get back from the funding from them. I was hoping it was gonna be a little higher percentage, but it was presented to me yesterday with the agreement and they're giving us. It's a 30, 37,825 back towards the the project.
Thousand dollars thing then. Because it said the total was like 44,000.
The total, the new, that's the new. I was gonna call him back and ask, so there was a percentage, but then I think they withhold that. But the only amount we're getting is the 37. So um. That kind of, those are, we still have to, we don't, we can take, the Stormwater project was gonna come out of, it was budgeted to come out of sewer maintenance anyways. We we moved it over to ARP when I found out we were getting funding available. We could still take half of it out of sewer maintenance and half all. We have to at least cover the 37. We have to pay 37 out of our ARP funding to get county funding back. So not that there's a roll call vote, I still need council to agree on the agreement that was submitted in the email.
We're gonna have to call the roll first, but not a roll call vote, but we have to have it on the record who's here.
A motion to accept the county's agreement, is that right, Pat? Wait for.
All right. Do that, that I'm sorry. All right, if you could call a roll and then we'll call a vote. We'll have the vote, we'll have the roll call, so that it will be established in the minutes who's here and voting. And then we'll just do a voice vote. Present.
Present.
Yeah. We have a motion.
This is the street, maybe not a street, maybe it's gonna be a path. Is that what we're talking about, that project? This is reimbursement from the county towards that project. Gotcha. Does it need to be seconded? Take a motion.
I'd move to accept the, I'm not sure how the motion should be ordered. Move to accept the grant proposal from the county.
The move is seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Vote his name, vote his parents.
Yes, we'll take your money, Captain.
And obviously, the the budget went out prior to that adjustment. So if um. We want to talk about the the budget. If you guys have any questions, we updated some things that have actually been spent. If we adjust some of these numbers with only getting the 37,000 back, we're in the negative 118,000. So we're gonna have to move some things around here to, or we just won't cover that 175, the whole 175 out of the Stormwater.
We had previously had that in sewer maintenance, like you said. So we may be able to move that back there.
Yeah.
If we need to cover that cost.
Take 37, 37 out of that. So that's the easy fix.
I'm sorry if you're, I had a question about.
Yeah, well, to remind everybody, you guys got the email for the workshop shop for November 5th. So a lot of those ideas will be discussed at that workshop. If you haven't registered for that workshop yet, go on the email and register. Done.
Send that to me.
Correct, assuming we can't all attend that workshop, correct?
It's just a workshop, so it's not any voting. It's just a.
Any issues? Mr. Solicitor?
Sir, I'm ready, sir.
I wouldn't think a conference.
Well, yeah.
It's a seminar.
It's a seminar that a plan.
In information, you're not there making any decisions.
Just checking.
Going to like.
Anybody, so this this is, is this posted on the website? It's not public.
It's invitational, but there are a lot of people who are not on Borough Council who are being invited.
Talked about, not that we're there, right? Like if we were talking about.
About any borough business while you're there, other than just visions. So you're not talking about, and you're not voting, and you're not trying to have any decisions. I mean, and and you're not going to be running the show, correct? This is more, yeah, yeah. I mean, I would say it'd be no different than going to a State Boroughs Association meeting. Theoretically, you could all go to that.
Yeah. Okay.
See y'all there.
Okay, great. That's great to know.
Any other questions or comments?
Program's going well. We have like, we have five people submitted.
How how was it going in general with the all the the letters that went out? Are they all been accounted for? Wasn't like a 117 letters sent, something like that? To after they did the inventory, sorry, I gave no context to that question. After the inventory took place, a lot of trees were considered dangerous. How was that going?
Good, I think we're, I'll have to get an update from Shade Tree. I don't think that many letters went out. I don't think that.
They make me go to this meeting, aren't they? Well, there was a lot of, there was a significant number of trees that were considered dangerous or at risk. So there should have been that many letters, something like that. I don't know the exact number, but it was a lot.
The borough, so they might not been.
Or it was in private property also, not just the public property? To come down, but I don't want to bother them if they're already like letters out.
The the difference from what the county gave us for Nixon, and there's like, you know, 18, $19,000 that we hadn't accounted for yet. But whatever's, whatever we're short is coming coming out of this Stormwater fund. Is that what we're gonna do? So we don't have to reconfigure this.
And that was the main premise of sending of the budget being on here, was to just talk about this grant? Or was there another? Is there anything else going with this?
No, I I mean, just you guys wanted to update, you know, we are spending some of the the funds. You know, we're moving forward with some of the the. And there's stuff still on here that. The economic bell, and I'm hoping after this work session, we'll get some better ideas of what you guys want to do with this this funding. I know the sidewalk repair program, I don't even want to bring it up, but.
There's some other, there's some models that we hadn't thought about that I'm hoping we can start to explore. So it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be easy. We are. Under miscellaneous, we've we've done our donation to the fire department and to the ambulance. We haven't done the donation to DI yet.
No, I I I was just waiting to see. I know, I I feel bad, Joe Kinner probably sees us on here all the time. I'm not sure if they, I think they need it, but I just, they don't have a person in an office, so I wasn't sure. But I knew, I do know they they could use the money, so.
Can we get in touch with you to coordinate if, you know, when would be? How did I handle that? Would be helpful.
To put the money towards maybe. One certain event or something like that.
Thank you, this. When people ask me, what's happening with the ARP movement? This is what we've done so far. Is there any new business coming for the council? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You need some signatures? Can we do it right here?
Yeah.
So there was a discussion on the Iron Sea Park, I guess, upgrade, if you want to call it, or modeling or not.